It is five thirty on the dot.
We should have the project manager in charge of crowd control tonight, right now? Go left, sort of. Okay, I'm calling into Orange County Council to assess your agency stamp housing authority special meeting on this June day, June the twenty, Thursday. And that's about it, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council Agency Authority Member Taylor.
Here.
Council Agency Authority Member Torres.
Here.
Council Agency Authority Member Van.
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Vice Chair Percy Warren.
Here.
And Mayor Chairman Shalton.
Okay, has anybody sent me information that they'd like to read?
For closed sessions, sir, we have received them.
And does anyone get ideas of items to address this time?
Mr. Mayor, we don't know.
Thank you. That being said, would you go ahead and give us what we're going to talk to you about, please?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There are two items on closed session. The first is public and private performance evaluation of the city manager pursuant to Government Code five four nine five seven in conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code section five four nine five seven one six. The agency designated negotiator is mayor and unrepresented in the city. Thank you.
That being said, I'm going to recess. I'm here. We're going to go into closed session. We'll be back in about four hours.
City Council recessed to close session. We will return in open session at six thirty P. M. And do thank you for your patience. General silence.
I'm going to call the Orange County Council to assess your agency housing authority. Call please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Agency Authority Member Taylor.
Here.
Council Agency Authority Member Torres.
Here.
Council Agency Authority Member Van.
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Vice Chair Percy Warren.
Here.
And Mayor Chairman Shalton.
Thank you. And we did have a closed session. Do we have an inaugural award?
Mayor and Council.
If you'll all please rise to the five. Mr. Pierce, would you please?
Sure. And over your heart, face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all.
All right, we're going to have our special presentations and awards. It's going to give us a great deal of pleasure tonight on behalf of the council itself and also the residents of our city to give certificates of recognition to the sponsors of Paint the Town with Love Event that was held for the first time ever in our city. At this particular time, we do have some proclamations. They're all very similar. So I'm going to read the proclamations and who gets them, and then we're going to have you come up one at a time for a Kodak moment. That's why I used to put in my drawing camera. See those three people laughing out there? Okay, this is going to go to the people or the businesses that have come in. It goes in recognition and appreciation of your support and contribution to the Stand Paint the Town with Love Citywide Volunteer Event. The City Council of the City commands all of you for supporting this worthwhile adventure or event. And our community has a continued to grow, progress, and success in providing excellent public services which attain an attractive high quality of life for all our citizens. All of you are actively participating in our community, not just with this, but with many, many other things. And therefore, we want to know that you do make a difference in helping making our community a much better place to live. Therefore, I set my hand and cause to be a fixed, the seal of the city's stamp on behalf of my folks. So what we'd like to do, folks, is we'll have you come up. And on the way up, we want you to stop at the podium and just give a couple of words about who you are. And come on up with us. We're going to give you your award. And then we're going to take a picture for you. Also, if you don't have a city pin, Patricia has city pins. Now we have. I gave those to Mayor Lieutenant. There you go. And you guys can pass them on. All right, let's go down there. I will begin, first of all, by bringing up the Stanton Lions Club. Come on up.
Yes, it should be on, and then just close to the handle, click on when it recognizes you're there.
All right. All right, Tessie. Hi, my name is Mike Pierce. I am the president of the Stanton Lions Club. And we have the rest of our members. We have our secretary, Lori Pierce. We have our treasurer, Pam. Pam Skunover. And we have the rest of our members. We are part of the Stanton Lions Club, but we are also part of LCIF, which is Lions Club International. Lions Club International, it has two, it's in 200 countries, and we have 48,000 clubs worldwide. And we are just one club of that. We do a lot of active volunteer work here in the city. We're involved with the Boys and Girls Club of Stanton. And then we also actively are involved with the city. We participate in Easter event, the Halloween event, and many other things like Stanton You, Stanton Community Foundation Car Show, the Uppercut Foundation, and the Fireworks Stand, many other things. We're very proud to participate in the Paint the Town with Love event. We got a really good time participating and donating to that event. And then we also did a project over here, somewhat of an environmental improvement project right over here in front of the Boys and Girls Club where we lead the plan. So very proud to be here.
Go ahead.
Yeah, she doesn't have one.
All right, are we ready? Right over here. Okay, one, two, three, cheese. Let me do a couple more. One, two, three, cheese. Thank you.
Yes, you or John's? John is already marking the one.
One more, one more, two more there.
Okay, ready? One, two, three, cheese. Go.
All right. Okay, next we have Home Deco, store number six nine five.
Hello, everybody. My name is Raul. I am currently the store manager at the Stanton Home Deco, also the team decod captain. I just want to say thank you so much for allowing us to be a part of the Paint the Town with Love, and we can't wait to do it again next year.
Number or anybody else? Ready? Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay, we also have two other recipients that were able to make it tonight. One of them is Jenri Housing Corporation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Michael Bassett, Chief Development Officer of Greenbury. And I'm joined by Kelsey Brewer, who's our Vice President of Business Development. We are both thrilled to be here, obviously because of our very strong partnership with the City of Stanton, best symbolized by the grand opening that all of you attended last month for our three projects in Stanton. We were dismayed, however, to find that after building more than 150 permanent supportive, high-quality permanent supportive housing units in City of Stanton, we still failed to receive a PIN. So we decided, we made the decision to extend our partnership and participate in the Paint the Town with Love event, the inaugural event. Obviously, we're very thrilled to participate in that event. Jamboree's mission is to improve communities, to improve housing and services. This is obviously an event that's going to improve the community. We're thrilled to be a part of the inaugural one and look forward to participating next year as well. So thank you.
I'm not going to use your name. Okay, Star Rex, store number oh six five seven six. Okay, they're not here, however, they did help us with some of the goodies that we had there. So we'll go down inside. And Chris, okay, so Mr. Townsend's not here, Eric's not here, so we'll Townsend Public Affairs also is a big supporter. So we'll make sure that they get that. Let's give a big, one big hand. The event was a huge success, not only because of the sponsorship that we recognized tonight, but also the hundreds or so volunteers that spent their day with us, making this town more beautiful. I wanted to thank John Moore, our Parks and Recreation member, who came up with the idea and worked very closely with Xenia and her group. We're lucky to have a community development, our community services department, under her guidance. So please thank all the worker bees that were there that day. They have a very good job. I had our power showed up, but we have more employees than you guys wanted. Thank you for being there that day. She's a privilege. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on. We are now at number two. This is a proclamation occurring the month of July two oh two four is a park creation month in the City of Stanton. This is going to go to presenters to Xenia and Miss Nancy Ando. Is that great?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to introduce one of our Stanton residents to share a little bit about the programs that she participated in in the city. Her name is Nancy Ando.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nancy Dow, and I'm a resident of Stanton. I actually just moved here like over a year ago. I used to live in Santa Ana, but I actually moved here because of all the parks and recreation activities, such as the Kids' Night Out and Paint the Town. And I just want to say thank you to everybody who volunteered their time, their effort, money, everything, right, to make it possible. Because, guys, everything you guys have done is making this town, this city, a better place. And it's actually, they, like, my kids are smiling and happy, and they know that, you know, it's a safe place, that they get to be themselves and feel included. So thank you, everybody, for making this event possible.
All right. Think of a remember the name. I'm not sure. What's your name this year and how remembering this is available to that name?
So every July across the country, we celebrate Parks and Recreation Month. We have in the back of our summer brochure, each single day, we have something small, something big that each family will be giving throughout the city. In addition to our highlights, our Friday movies in the park, and there's flash flood running every day. We encourage families to get out, enjoy our facilities, explore a new park. And we also will have a few contests on social media as well, highlighting all the benefits of parks.
Thank you. If you'll have, go over you, if everybody else is going down. Basically, this proclamation declares that because you are an integral part of our community, Parks and Recreation, that we are going to declare this a Park and Recreation Month through the month of July coming up. And it's resolved by myself. Okay, we're now at the consent calendar.
One more special presentation, item C.
Oh, that's right. We now are going to have a presentation by the Orange County Power Authority. We're going to share their mission with the City Council and the public and provide information on their current operations. Honest, you're all good. And Dave Smith.
Yes, that's my name.
You're up. It's all yours.
Yeah, make sure everyone hear me just fine. That is great. Well, thank you, Council members and staff, for the opportunity to present the Orange County Power Authority. My name is Dave Smith, External Affairs Manager. So what we're going to discuss today is we're going to begin with talking about what community choice aggregation is, talk about how OCPA was formed, and our highlights over the last year, discuss our power content label, which is essentially a receipt of our energy transactions that we've procured for the grid, talk a little bit about our 2324 operating budget, as well as talk about the process roadmap on how a city can join us. Talk a little bit here about community choice aggregation. So to start, what community choice aggregation is, OCPA and agencies like ours is offering residents and communities a new way to power their community. So how did community choice aggregation start? It was established by a assembly bill one one seven, which was established two thousand and two, essentially to create competition and choice into the energy market, which it never existed. Traditionally, energy is to be controlled by an industrial utility, which is a for-profit utility. So consequentially, revenue and investments haven't always been directly diverted right back to the community. So what this does at its cores is it essentially allows residents and businesses the opportunity to do two things. One, choose who their energy provider is, and additionally, how much renewable energy they want to put onto the grid. So there's a lot of precedence for this. As you look at the map here, you can see there are agencies similar to Orange County Power Authority all across the state of California. They're serving 14 million people in 200 communities. So all of these communities are benefiting from having more renewable energy. So let's talk about the benefits of what this model does. One, as I indicated, it brings choice and competition to the energy market. It creates a model for competitive costs. It gives local jurisdictions like cities control over programs and rates, which is something that hasn't really been done before. It also promotes economic development. So if our agency comes to the city, it'll create new jobs. And also, we offer training and help, you know, retrain a workforce to work in the industry. And more important, it has local investments. So all our programs are designed specifically for the needs of the local community. And we're addressing a clarion call here in Orange County by putting more renewable energy on the grid faster than the for-profit. So here's a graph that kind of gives you an illustrative overview of what we do. So OCPA specifically, we buy energy from the market, just like the IOU. What we focus on is buying more renewable energy. We work with the Southern California Edison to place that energy onto the grid. And from that process, that energy is transported to local businesses and residential homes. Let's talk a little bit about how our agency was formed. So our, the conversation for OCPA began in the city of Irvine in 2018 because residents and commercial business owners came to the city asking for the city to explore how its community choice aggregation agency can benefit the city. After a myriad of conversations in 2021, the Irvine City Council approved the initial funding to establish this. So right now, our agency has three member cities. The first, of course, was Irvine, which currently is at the 100% renewable rate. We have the city of Wayne Park, which is also at 100% renewable. And then we have the city of Fullerton, which chose our middle-tier plan, which is 72% renewable energy. And it's important to note that all the municipal city counts are at our basic choice rate. Let's talk a little bit about our plans. OCPA offers three plan options. The first is our basic choice, which has 44% renewable energy, which is currently 3% less than Southern California's equivalent generation rate. And then we have the middle-tier, which is our smart choice plan, which again, I indicated, for 72% renewable energy. And that is a cent more per kilowatt hour than the basic choice rate. And of course, we have the premium product, which is our 100% renewable plan, which is a cent and a half more than our basic choice. So to break that down, let's look at an average bill of a residential customer that uses about 425 kilowatt hours per month, which is sort of the average. So if you look at the yellow category here, you'll see that's our basic choice plan. So you'll see on average, the OCPA customer on the generation side has a bill of roughly 57.93 cents. And then the equivalent plan with SE, which has significantly less renewable energy, it's about $59.82. So you can see that's a $1.89 difference, percentage-wise, breaks down to about 3.2% less. And then you can see there's a cost increase. If you go to the smart choice plan, so you can see that's about 3.9% increase for our smart choice rate. And then if you look at the premium product, which is the 100% renewable energy choice, you'll see it goes up to about $64.31, whereas, and then SE will be around $59.82, which shows about $4.49 difference, which is essentially on their bill, the equivalent to buying Starbucks coffee, for those who are coffee drinkers. So definitely not an extreme cost increase, but for those who are committed to putting 100% renewable energy on the grid, they have that option. So great, let's briefly kind of highlight over like what we've done in the last year. So we've launched a lot of service, so municipal and commercial launched in April 2002, and then residential October in 2022. We're also one of the largest and greenest CCAs in California. We have more than 150,000 residential and commercial customers. And as I indicated before, our basic choice energy plan is 3% less than the IOU, which is a ask of the community, and we are able to deliver on that. And essentially, to promote rate stabilization, we have entered in a 10-year long-term contract with Grace Orchard Energy Center LLC, which means over the next 10 years, we are guaranteed to maintain our rate levels. And if not, and also, we're on a trajectory to do even better than we're doing today. And then we produced our first power content label, which is essentially a receipt of all of our energy transactions to prove that we're actually doing what we claim here. So let's talk about our successes. You know, over the last year, it's been a huge trajectory change in the agency, and we've been awarded both nationally and locally. So we are recognized by the National Renewable Energy Laboratory as one of the top US green providers in the nation. Additionally, we are acknowledged by the Orange County Business Council as their Environment, Social, and Governance Honorary. And we've been recognized by many of the local chambers and conferences across our community, and we're proud to have their support. And lastly, we received the Honorable Mission Award in the Green Region Initiative category by the Southern California Association. So at our core, what I think truly differentiates our agency from the traditional IOU is all our excess revenues are reinvested into specific customer programs. So one we want to highlight that recently reached out is, as you know, during the summer, energy usage goes up. So we're working through our OC Summer Readiness Program with our commercial customers to help them identify ways to reduce the amount of impact they're putting on the grid and to essentially lower their energy costs. We also have the SoCal Rent Pump Water Program, where we're helping our customers buy and purchase water heaters at a 50% reduced rate. So that's really helping a lot of our customers that have their own air and air programs really have state-of-the-art equipment in their home. And then, of course, we're committed And then, of course, we're committed to finding intuitive ways to add energy to the grid. So we're doing that through our Biomass Program, which is a program for small renewable energy generators less than five megawatts in size. This program is facilitated, we're working in partnership with the CPUC. So how this works is essentially, we convert biomass from water waste and we convert that to energy. We're also taking, especially in our member cities like Waya Park, any kind of municipal organic waste and putting that through a process to transform that into energy. Let's talk a little bit about our community programs. So right now, we recently introduced our Bright Futures Grant, which is a grant up to fifty thousand dollars that we're giving to local nonprofits who want to enter into educating the U residents and businesses about sustainable energy practices and also talking about the programs that we're offering. We have our bike safety and incentive program, which seems to be a huge success in the community. So we're working with local law enforcement. In each of our cities, talking about, hey, how can you ride a e-bike safely? Make sure the community understands our local regulations, and then also offering a rebate program so that purchase of premium e-bikes can be more accessible for members of the community. We also have our Own Connect Partnership, which is a program essentially, those who are familiar with like the Google Nest Program, it's equivalently the same. Our customers can opt into this program where we will give them recommendations on what hours to, you know, use their AC or, you know, any of their electrical products in their home. As they enroll in this program, they successfully hit the metrics, they're awarded discounts on their bills, they're rewarded with rebates, discounts to our marketplace store. And mentioning our marketplace store, we're very proud of this. We have discounted energy products, for example, electric lawn blow, mowers, blowers, thermostats, all at a discount rate around fifty percent. So an example of that would be like, let's look at the hundred-dollar retail price for the Google Nest thermostat. Get that about fifty dollars for being a customer of OCPA. And then lastly, very important, especially I think to the city of Stanton and some other cities is though you give your customers a choice of OCPA, your residents are still able to receive access to the care, barra, and medical baseline programs. So now I'll talk about essentially the receipt of our energy transactions and what our power content label has shown. And at its core, you can see that our power content label showed that we have had a very successful tenure here in operation. We have produced seven-hundred-and-nine billion pounds of carbon emissions were reduced through our renewable energy procurement. So what that means, it's like the equivalent of removing seventy-one thousand five-hundred-and-sixty-five gas-powered vehicles off of the road. It's equivalent to switching to twelve million incandescent light bulbs. And for instance, if we were to plant five million, five-point-three million treated ceilings and they were to grow over the next ten years, that's the impact of what we've done at OCPA. So let's jump more specifically into our power content label. We like to call it like a nutrition label for power. So what this does is it breaks down each of our plans, type of energy we purchase, and how much carbon has been reduced. So we talk about our power content, we can see that we actually exceeded mandatory state requirements for the purpose of renewable energy goals. We exceeded voluntary renewable energy goals for each of our retail plans. So for example, our basic choice rate, which is supposed to be around forty-four percent renewable energy. In fact, upon review, it was sixty percent renewable, and all the remainder of the energy was carbon free. Also, when we did, it showed comparatively between OCPA and Southern California Edison, our portfolio reports greenhouse gas emissions intensity of eighty-three-point-four-five pounds of carbon, where S E reported greenhouse gas emission intensity of fifty, five-hundred-and-fifty-two pounds. So we've done significantly better in that category, and each year, that's going to get better and better. So something that we have recently rolled out is an RFP for a community power plan because we need to know directly from our residents and businesses what kind of programs are salient to them to help them meet their needs. So as you can see here by this timeline, we are planning to do our community needs assessment during the fall of twenty-twenty-four. In early twenty-twenty-five, we expect to have our final report, and then to begin rolling out more programs in the summer of twenty-twenty-five. So I always like to do a comparative study, just given the proximity of Waya Park to the city of Stanton. I just want to show what our impact has been for the city. So when you look at this, you can see Waya Park has a totality of twenty-one thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty-six residential customers, and we have successfully retained each six percent of residential customers, showing that majority of the city has a favorable and supportive position of OCPA. Now, I'm very proud of what we've done with our commercial customers there. Out of the three-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-four commercial customers, we have retained ninety-two percent of the participation of those commercial customers into our endorsement of pretty much every chamber across the county, love what OCPA offers and how it benefits their businesses. And that's an eighty-seven percent total participation rate in that city, which is greater than CCAs in a lot of other markets we're doing really good there. We also led to the reduction by eighty-six million pounds of carbon through the procurement of renewable energy on behalf of the city. And again, comparatively, that's equivalent of removing eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-one gas-powered vehicles off the roads. So another piece of this is, one thing we have to make sure is that we are a financially sound and strong agency, and I believe our budget shows that. So high level here, which I'll get into a little more specifically, we have so far reached a strong net position of forty-one million, and we're expected to reach one-hundred-and-nine million in our rate stabilization reserves by essentially the end of this month. We were able to deliver on a promise to our community of having a basic choice rate, which is lower than the current S E rate. And this has proportionally spread across the rest of our plans. Something that was a call of action from a lot of our residential community was like, after their transition up to NIM three-point-O, solar panel customers, which we call our NIM customers, felt like they weren't getting a lot of return for their solar panels. So we opted to maintain the M-two-point-O level, where our customers are receiving ten percent more, ten percent above Southern California Edison's net surplus compensation rate. And we've expanded our staff on about eight new employees with extreme technical backgrounds in the energy industry. We've expanded our investment in public outreach. We've expanded our investments in data analytics. And we're working with every city in our jurisdiction on helping them build their climate action plans and help them make energy more portable, provide reliable energy, and also the development of electric. So here, which looks like this is pretty hard to see actually, but here's a breakdown of our operating budget. So just high-level keynotes here is right now, we have an extremely balanced budget with a net position of forty-one-point-one million dollars, which is about twelve point five percent of our revenue. Right now, the cost of energy is projected at roughly twenty-seven, two-hundred-and-seventy-one million, and that's about eighty-two-point-six percent of our revenue. So you can see as the majority of our revenue goes directly into the energy purchases because that's vitally important for us to be sustainable. And then we have about sixteen-point-one million left over, which is four-point-nine percent of our revenue, which goes into like pay staff, operations, and also investing into community programs. So I think something that's really important is how do we remain stable over the long term when there's fluctuations in the energy market? So we did this by establishing a five-year OCPA Financial Performance Rate Stabilization Program. So if you look at the graph here, which is pretty hard to see, you'll see this year, we're around eighty-eight million dollars, and year over year, that's going to grow. We expect by twenty-twenty-nine to have reserves around one-hundred-and-forty-seven million dollars, which means that's about going to be fifty percent of our operating budget. So why is this important to us? It does three critical things. It allows us to be more competitive in buying energy because we'll be able to apply for an A-one credit score, so we have the purchase through credit and not always have to use cash on hand, which that will help us promote our rate stabilization. If there's ever a case where there's unforeseen challenges in the energy market, this creates, our SB fund will allow us to, you know, use that money to safeguard our energy and plans and protect our customers, which is vitally important. So this trajectory model shows that we have the, you know, fiscal background, understanding, and plan to make sure that we maintain our low rates, and as we get that A-one credit score up, we'll even be able to bring our rates down. So the last piece of the puzzle here is how do we engage our local community and provide public outreach and support? So we take this really serious at OCPA. We think it's vital to make sure both customers understand our offerings. So we do this regularly by holding town calls, either with community groups or with the city. We do these both in-person and virtual to allow for accessibility. I already spoke briefly about our community power plan. We also use geo-marketing through YouTube to run ads that we can focus by zip code, which gets the information directly to our households. We also develop website and social media content, copy and graphics that we provide to the city. So we think it's really important to make sure that, you know, it isn't verging on city staff participating in OCPA. We develop worksheets, FAQs, info graphics. I already talked about our power content label. Some of our elected leaders really appreciate it. We develop content for councilmember constituent newsletters. And of course, you know, we are regularly in the community at events through our community external affairs team, which I'm a member of. We also invested in a world-class E and B R hall center to help resolve any customer inquiries. I'm proud to announce that we have got it to a point where customers are not on the line waiting for us for more than one minute for every customer call, which is leading in the CCA space currently. And of course, we do what all agencies do in Orange County. We have information booths at community events. We partner with the city to do power hours at the city halls, briefing and staffs. And then we develop all the premium post-enrollment letters required to onboard cities. So the last piece of the puzzle is like, what is the roadmap to become a member of OCPA? So this process works by step language. We're currently doing, we give a presentation to the city council. Step two is the ask I have today is to interman in NDA with the city where we can receive your load data and do a feasibility study and analysis in order to come back to the council and tell you explicitly what being a member of OCPA would look like for the city. There's two things to point out here. One, this doesn't require any staff time because our consultants do all the work. And two, this step doesn't have any cost to the city. And thirdly, it's also not a vote to say we want to join OCPA. It's vote to make sure we do an analysis that specifically highlights what the impact of OCPA would look like for your city. The next step would be, we bring back this data, this presentation of analytics, present that to you. And if the city seemed to support this endeavor, you would be able to take a vote to vote on entering in the part of our joint JPA. And then we would take that back to the OCPA Board of Directors, where they would approve it, and we start developing an implementation plan. And then we start working with the city on what, you know, the board process would look like, what public outreach would look like. And then lastly, based on the timeline, most suitable for the city, services would go online. That part usually takes about two years because we have to buy the energy, establish, work with Southern California Edison for transferring of the council. That's about a two-year process. Now, just jumping back to the feasibility study, that takes us about three months to put that together. And with that, I then want to say thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today, and I'm open to answering any questions.
So you had mentioned in your presentation that joining the CPA would allow us to control the rates?
Yes.
Aren't the rates predetermined by the market, or how does that work?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So our rates are set by the board of directors, specifically. So that is what makes us significantly different than the IOU. Although the rates inform the cost of energy, that's why we designed what I said was the reserve fund for us. So that gives us money in case like the cost of energy goes up, we can use that if necessary. But right now, our revenues online to maintain our discounted rates and also on a trajectory to reduce those rates. So if the city decided to join, you would be part of our board of directors, where every three months, we do a rate study analysis to see if we can drop rates or maintain our levels. I hope that answered your question.
You had said that there was a basic choice option that guaranteed that residents would need that number.
Yes, right now, our basic choice rate is a guarantee built into our rate stabilization fund structure and also set by our board of directors. That rate will always index three percent less than S.
That's forty-four percent renewable?
That is currently forty-four percent renewable, and year over year, we plan to increase the amount of renewable energy in each one of our plants.
And do you find it just though with S E power that we're running against residents, one percent of that is renewable?
Yeah, it's about seven percent.
So how are you able to have a three percent lesser price with more renewable energy?
Yes, that's a really great question. That goes back to our Grace Orchard LLC contract. When I talked to you about entering in long-term agreements with energy providers, that is allows to set a rate for the next ten years, so that rate is guaranteed. We're also in conversations with other energy providers to set long-term contracts. So if you think about like S E historically going back a hundred years, they had long-term contracts with energy providers. If you ever look at an energy bill, you'll see there's a PCIA charge, right? So that charge is basically paying the variable interest of their long-term contracts that's being passed on to our customers. We also, for our customers, don't have that, so that also is another variable that allows us to lower our costs.
So if we were to join, do the residents have to opt in, or do they opt out? What is the default?
So the default is for a plan level, that's determined by the city council. So let's say in theory, you guys choice the basic choice rate, all residents and businesses would be automatically enrolled into OCPA service at that level, and then it'd be up to them to opt out. And we have an entire staff and team to help them through that process if they so choose to do.
Yep.
Thank you.
I know about one of the biggest wonders, especially in electricity, is the structures. Can you tell me a little bit about your members of that?
Yeah, with respect to infrastructure?
Yes.
Yeah, so when it, in terms of infrastructure, we're just on the generation side of the business, so we're not building like grid infrastructure. Because right now, all transmission lines are controlled and operated by the investor-owned utility. So that's where the partnership comes between most of that agency and us is that we buy the energy and we work with them through their infrastructure to get the energy to homes. As we scale and we have more budget, we're definitely interested. And if you look at clean power lines in LA County, they're about a few years ahead of us. They're able to spend dollars on investing in like microgrid technology. So using microgrid technology and solar panels in like commercial business zones to power all the businesses there. So we do have a plan to do that. It's just not something we can do every one. That's something maybe year five, and as we scale, the city's got more budget to grow those kind of programs.
Do you have the pay to use S E's lines?
No, we do not.
When we first started after residing, wasn't there a four-million-dollar loan, was it a five-million-dollar loan?
A five-million-dollar, it was a seven-million-dollar loan.
And where are you with that?
We are about fifty-five percent paid off, projected to have that loan fully paid off by twenty-twenty-seven.
Okay, also, I noticed that on some of your choices, A, B, and C, two of them were actually a dollar amount, right?
Correct.
The dollar was three percent.
Correct.
First charge was three, you had dollar, dollar, right?
Yeah.
Can you show me the difference if they're all?
Yeah, sure, let me go back to that. Let's go back to that. Here, here we go. So when you look at that plan, I was talking in percentages, but so for example, the basic choice rate, currently three percent less than the Southern California Edison plan.
Which I think is too smart of that.
Too smart of that. This one? Okay, great. Yeah, so for your question, you said our basic choice rate is three percent less than Southern California Edison's generation rate. We index the rest of our plans off the basic choice rate. So all we do is we add for the middle-tier plan, a cent more per kilowatt hour based on the price of the basic choice. So think about it like this. Our basic choice rate is kind of the foundation of how we build all of our plans. That is always indexed less than S E. So all the rest of the plans, the pricing is based on whatever that rate is, that three percent discount. I don't know if that made sense.
And anybody can opt out?
Anybody can opt out, opt in. Like, let's say, for example, if the city decided to move forward with OCPA, they can opt out, right, of the service. Now, they're like, oh, man, these plans have even reduced even more. Oh, I want to get back in. They have full choice. What you're giving is your community the choice to What you're giving is your community the choice to choose type of energy and plan they're on. That's all.
What's your contractual agreement with the council besides your renewable energy?
Yeah, so our agreement with Edison is solely to be able to use the transmission lines with Southern California Edison, which was outlined in that Assembly Bill 117. That's what gives us that agreement and structure.
How much do you buy?
Oh, so, so let's make this very clear. We don't buy energy from Edison. Edison buys energy from the same sources through the diesel market as we do, or they develop long-term contracts with energy providers. So we're, so you've got to think about looking at it like this. We're both buying energy. We're just buying different types of energy currently. And our focus, which is really different, is that we're trying to put more renewable energy onto the grid. That's our focal point, so that informs our business practice.
So for residents, the word they want to do would be apartment cost. Because depending on how much energy they're wishing, production of power they get, costs goes up.
Exactly, based on the plan structures. So you can choose your level. Do I want to be at forty-four percent or it has cost savings, which I think is a great starting point? But if I believe I really want one hundred percent renewable energy, I'm willing to pay that four dollars more a month, which I always say the equivalent to Starbucks coffee, because I'm a big believer, I want all of my energy to be completely clean and renewable and carbon.
And have ideas, you know, create what happens if something isn't market.
That's a really great question. So we have a ten-year contract with a long-term provider. And if that rate of energy goes up, that's where, why we have invested into the rate stabilization fund so we can use those dollars if we even need it. But even we might have the A1 credit score, which we expect to have in two years. We can just leverage credit to buy and maintain those costs. So we have a strategic financial plan to prepare for that dire emergency.
So for Edison, it's probably around five, six, a whole lot now?
Roughly around, depending on?
Yeah, and you are at?
Per kilowatt hour right now? Uh, man, I, I don't have the exact numbers on that, but we're about maybe between two, around there.
Do you guarantee a rate for period of time?
So we guarantee these rates right now based on our long-term contract for about several years moving forward. And we also see projections where our rates are even lower. But we do have for the next several years, we have this three percent set. And we believe as we grow and based on the growth of our rate stabilization fund and our buying of energy on long-term contracts, these costs can go down to a point of being almost ten percent less than the IOU comparable to some of the CCA programs up forward.
So basically, you're not given an Edison's rate or you have this large rates, but you have, you have no guarantee of the rates that was supposed to be charged?
We have no control of what the market price is going to be for energy. So we're in the same game as SE's procurement of energy. We just have a philosophical focus on renewable energy providers. And we are, there are several programs coming online next year that we will have contracts with because we're already working with renewable energy developers to make sure we can maintain these rates over time.
So that being said, since you have no control of that, it's really hard to give a guarantee to those, right?
Yeah, and that's the same, the same way Southern California Edison cannot give a guarantee of their rates. But we can guarantee that we will index off their equivalent generation rate at the basic choice rate to remain three percent less. That is a guarantee we have.
Edison, Edison, uh, see, how, so this?
Uh, can you repeat that again? Can you repeat the question?
I said, is Edison under the California Energy Commission for the rates? Are you, like, saying?
Yeah, so we are all overseen and regulated by the CPUC. The reason why you hear more news about Southern California Edison engaging the CPUC is because they're consistently raising their rates. The projections have been going up fourteen percent. So that's why there's a lot of hearings. So we are regulating our rates, but we also set our rates. And then we, of course, submit to the CPUC for approval, just the same process.
So if Edison's going for rate increase, um, since you're this year with them, you would have probably also go and as for rate increase in the cost for the, you'd have to do that?
No, so just because SE's increasing rates, doesn't necessarily mean we're going to increase our rates. As SE has created, increased the rates two times this year and we have not. So now there's no guarantee that we have to do that. We're more focused on the cost of energy. If anything, let's say, uh, cost of energy went up sixty percent. Maybe that's a factor on maybe we might, instead of moving forward an extra to four percent less, we might remain at the three percent, yes. And res, by reserves, providing a portion of our energy, as you saw in our budget. That's why eighty-seven percent is allocated to the procurement of energy sources.
So if you're going to see how many utilities, if you're asking for rate increase, how would you make the adjustment? You can buy your energy from different.
So how would we make the con, because we're in a long-term, ten-year contract where the rate is set of buying the energy from that provider?
Your provider?
From the provider direct. So think about it like this. I have a contract with Walmart. Walmart tells me they're going to sell me water for, gallon of water for the next year for two dollars a gallon, right? So in that example, we have from Great Fortune LLC, we have a deal which, I can't give trade secrets what that deal looks like. But what I can say is we have that set rate for that period of ten-year duration, which will maintain rate stabilization. And as I indicated a little bit before, is that there's other providers coming online where we're working the same deals with the expectation that in time, the demand of energy we need to provide, uh, the city, I mean, the county of Orange or the cities here is going to grow, so we're planning for scale. So having more and more demand. And then not to mention, we have almost twenty, thirty, forty percent of energy in reserves due to resource adequacy requirements, so.
So as an example, if your rate was five, six kilowatt hour and you're purchasing at a long-term rate. If your rate, if your costs go up, you can still charge five, six, five, six?
Correct, we wouldn't change it because long-term contract.
That would be for how long?
Um, that I can't guarantee for how long that would be because there's economic and market trends there. But I mean, with the reserve fund that we have, we can at least maintain our rates for about seven years based on kind of our economic model.
But you don't know how you would address that?
Uh, not specifically for long-term energy growth. We expect that our reserves, but there's a lot of stabilization happening in the area market. Yes, uh, costs do change over time, but through having reserves and then having that A1 credit score, being able to leverage credit purchases will allow us to keep sustaining. And right now, we have very stable revenues. So I can't talk about like what might happen forty years from now on, but I can talk about projections for maybe the next decade, we will have significantly lower rates than the IOU. You're welcome, sir.
I know you guys have tumultuous beginning and your leaders have no clue what the energy picture is about.
Sure.
It looks like there are many new articles on your company, the new people that you hired. And the company are much more proficient with the energy industry. And because of this, this might be an unfair question, but I know that you guys failed like seven state audits in a row. Have you had any audits since you have your new managerial team in place?
Sure, so just a little clarification, did fail seven audits. It was one audit from the state with, uh, seven items, right?
Okay.
Uh, that were asked for. We have successfully addressed all seven of those audit items, um, as of five months ago. We got the sign-off from the state that we've addressed everything in the audit, right? We have a reserve fund, we have a community advisory board of residents from the community to inform the board of directors. We have all the technical expertise in-house. Uh, we have consultants that are energy analysts, we have a hall center, all the infrastructure that was required. We have met that standard and we have exceeded state standards since the change in leadership.
The one other question I have for you is if we went and took advantage of your service, why do you use Hampton? And then we decided that we want to go back to Southern California Edison?
Yeah.
Would there be any residual cost to the city?
Yeah, so that's a hard question to answer right now. That's the most important part of doing analytics of your load data. So I can't give you a direct answer for that. But I can tell you with the city of Huntington Beach that recently left, there was no cost to the city of Huntington Beach. I don't know all the mechanics of that, but I can all of the email with those details for you. You're welcome, ma'am.
Um, would it be, what the loss would be if they get the city pulled out?
Would there be a loss of?
When I said, would that cost to a city, would be, would the cost to you, the loss of the, leaving?
So you leaving, yes, there would be a cost to our business model, right? Because we're setting projections, right? X amount of customers means we're going to buy X amount of energy. So we purchase that energy. We're, we purchase energy and no one's a customer and they're paying the bills. Yeah, there's definitely going to be a fiscal impact. But, you know, that's why we have our reserves funds and we can also redirect that energy to other jurisdictions, which means we don't have to buy more energy. So there's multi-factors here. So, and that's why, you know, my ask today is, let's, I asked the city if we could move forward with an NDA so we can analyze your load data at no cost to the city, at no burden to city staff, just to come back where I can answer those questions more formally about what this would look like for the city of San Antonio.
Yeah. Um, first of all, thank you, that was very thorough. And, um, I think it gives us some insight. I think someone said a bit about, oh, you couldn't really be getting. I personally know some of your board members and you have a lot to do.
Thank you, sir.
I think that, um, it, it does give our citizens an option. Uh, if they want to go forward with it, because if they want to be, in the, in the new one energy aspect of helping them learn, that's an option. I think also they have to be aware of the high due support, the cost of, to make the future. So there's a little bit to take a look at. Um, I think if the council probably, uh, had a chance to maybe sit down with our staff and take a look at how this would affect our community, uh, what impact it would have on city staff, if any. If there's any startup costs?
There are no startup costs.
There's no startup costs, okay. And then, um, if you look at how we benefit personally. So I think that asking for us to do what you asked to do and come after we have a chance to do everything.
Sure.
I know that I met with the, forgot his name, but he was at the midpoint of the bigger cities, uh, meeting that we had out in Orange.
Yeah, I was. I was, yeah.
Now I remember you. And so what was that gentleman?
Uh, it was the chair of our board, Fred Young, Councilman of Orange.
Right, so I think that, um, it would be good for us to be all the information that we can.
Sure.
Ask all the questions, have our staff review it. And then if we want to go forward with your request, I think that would be a really good time to do it.
Sure.
We might even want to ask our committee how they can go about it.
Absolutely.
I think that's, that's your, be the main. But we also want to ask how much, since it might be a city that wants.
Yes, sir, thank you.
What happened?
So you're saying that, uh, the next step would be to have an NDA?
Exactly.
Which it would not cost any staff time, it would not cost anything to the city and would not commit us to anything.
Correct.
All it does is gets followed, so you can analyze it.
So we can add, that NDA is a requirement for us to pull your load data from Southern California Edison because we do not have information on the energy load in your city, right? You're not a customer. So we need that NDA. It's a requirement by law for us to do that with SE.
Is, is that just like the city signings, some people work with you and that's it?
That's it.
And there's no other additional costs or fees or?
Absolutely none.
Okay, and then you'll come back in three months and give us more information?
Exactly. And then we can also, in that feasibility study, address city staff questions and customize it for your city.
And I, I'd like to motion that we consider it in NDA so that it doesn't really fire a lot if you have one signature. But they can get the information that they need, give us the answers that were asked.
I, I'm not sure we can, I don't think so. It's not on the agenda tonight.
Mayor Council, this is a presentation only nine, so for example, action taking.
Well, we, if you guys want to ask, I'm okay with that, but it gives us a little bit of lead time so we can. I mean, there, there, the gentleman here and some of the others, uh, said they'd be happy to meet with any of us at any time and go over some of the questions that we may have. So if we wait to the next council meeting, get on the agenda, we can get all our questions answered before we get into that during the state. That's awesome.
Sure, so, um, what you would recommend for the next session, if we were to begin NDA's and agendaize that possibility? And then, and then discuss that the next council meeting and I'll go with your say.
So when we get to a chance to be able to add something to the agenda, that would be welcome to do that and then we can go over the fact. I think that's your focus.
Okay, any other questions for me?
Yeah, I did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, Mayor Council. Have a good evening.
Okay, we're moving on to the city. All I need is when the app is on, scientists, unless somebody needs to address. Have we had any requests from staff to publish to the council on any of the items?
Mr. Mayor, this time we have them.
Okay. Sorry, I'm sorry. My computer's there. I think we'll. Use my slide. Don't you know what the whole thing is? Slide. I was working on salaries. I use my slide. Okay, um, there's been a motion. Did you accept editing?
I'll admit.
All in favor? All right, anybody who knows, anybody who's saying? Thank you. All right, moving on. Okay, we are now at the end of the city calendar, moving on to the hearings. We got started, item ten A. This is a public hearing of which I'm going to open relative to placing the annual sewer service charge for the sewer services on the property tax wall for the fiscal year. Let it be noted that, um, the recommendation to do no staff to the annual sewer change charge after the fiscal year two oh two four, you buy, so let's hear about that. Oh, who are you?
I'm Lisa.
Yeah, I thought you had.
Nope.
I collect the money and he fixes them and maintains them. But, um, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and everyone else joining us tonight. This is the first of two routine public hearings the city is required to hold in the White and State law. I want to point out that the fees required related to both of these items were included in the revenues for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five budget the city council adopted at its last meeting on June eleventh. This first public hearing is for the consideration of placing the annual sewer service charge for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five on the property tax wall. A public notice regarding this public hearing was published in the Orange County Register on June eleventh and June seventeen. The city's last sewer rate study was adopted by the city council on August eighth, twenty seventeen and approved a five-year rate schedule for fiscal years twenty eighteen, nineteen through fiscal years twenty one, twenty two. The city has not conducted a new sewer rate study since the twenty seventeen rates were adopted because staff isn't working on the updated sewer master plan. Therefore, the city's sewers customers have been charged the same annual sewer service charge annually since fiscal year twenty one, twenty two with zero increase. The recommended annual sewer service charge for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five is consistent with this practice and reflects no increase next year. Staff is requesting the city council open the public hearing for this item. And after considering many comments, approve resolution number twenty four, twenty five, two thousand twenty four, twenty five, excuse me, which directs the Orange County Auditor Control to place the annual sewer service charge on the property tax wall for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. I will tell you, I believe our next meeting, the master plan, will be presented to council for adoption. And, um, finance is ready to release that RFP for the next sewer rate study to be completed and done in conjunction with Proposition two oh eighteen, all for hopefully an effective date of next fiscal year.
And the Orange County District District does not have one sewer on the city's hand. I thought that was a Biden question. Uh, they're all on political areas. However, we need, which I said, one. Um, I wanted to be beneficial for us in the study to get some of the information that the OC SAM has to help relieve the burden of the study that we're looking to. Has anybody filed that?
I was in our Proposition two eighteen. We can't use the cost of OC SAM's district sewer system to base the cost of our city sewer system. But.
We can, yeah.
I'll let the city manager.
I think you're asking if when we go out to consider our plan, we can also incorporate data surrounding infrastructure that we need into to be able to, are any opportunities for any type of recommendation based on that? for any type of recommendation based on that.
Yeah, well, the other thing too is we've been collecting three point five percent the last two fiscal years. Ancient, I'm getting cheaper. I can't look at, even though this is a special fund, I look at, I can see I may be a capital improvement by budget. It might be who best to act actually keep our normal increase that we do every year, but that may end in vain. Now, the rest of these from you is can we give that back if we use it, right? Even not, not charging it over a period of time, which is what probably happens. Or can we return? That's what I'm thinking.
Well, we definitely have more sewer maintenance repair costs than we have money for. So there wouldn't be anything to return because it would all be, I mean, we have more projects in the pipeline right now than we have ones. So you'll see in the upcoming staff report and public works that we have a proposed CIP plan, which is millions of dollars worth of infrastructure improvements that need to be made over the next ten years.
That being said, would it be wise for us to change our more?
Oh, I agree. So, so actually, we think it's better to redo the rate study because we believe that we will need an increase to the rates. Um, but we want to do it with the backing and following the proposition to meeting requirements to have that study done. So because that study is not in place in time for this year's property taxes, that's why we're recommending we keep the rates as is, no increase following the years up on prior changes in the last two fiscal years. We'll bring you the sewer rate master plan at, I believe it's the next council meeting or the one after, council will receive and hopefully we're going to adopt that plan. That will then allow finance to initiate the RFP for the sewer rate study. So this year we want to hold rates at it. Most likely next year there would be an increase. And then we would go through our entire pop two eighteen process to have that reviewed prior to.
Yes, and my other concern about changing what's already been publicly noticed for this meeting is we would have to, we'd have to ask the city attorney if we've noticed that the public hearing was based on the proposed assessments being no increase and we get direction trying to change that. How does that change um, any actions?
Okay, so that is exactly why.
Oh, so yeah.
Yeah, if we do the study and we find out that we have to increase rates seven percent, we may need to only have to increase in three and a half percent because we drive over the norm, three five, three five, three five.
Well, there's a lot of options for the city council to consider because let's remember that on the adopt budget we just adopted, we have quite a reserve already in our sewer maintenance fund. Our reserve is four point two million of our unavailable fund balance into sewer maintenance fund. Plus, we have an additional one million um, from your reserve policy set aside for sewer capital improvement. It was just a part number. Uh, we'll probably have to develop a different sewer capital improvement reserve policy based on what the needs arise from the master plan. So um, that's something to consider.
Right, and I understand your point. My point is, when was the last time we did this? We had the.
Two thousand seventeen.
It was, I was right about seven years ago. So seven, there's a lot of degradation because we did have an older system. Because I remember when they were doing echo sampling for Laurel, uh, stand over on Pacific with a grid director or like that. There was actually concern about practice of the pilots at that particular point because of their age. So I understand where you want us to see what we're going to have to do and what that person is going to be increased. I know that we have good reserves. I just hate to get in that position where we have to get a lot more money to bring it up unless you're going to do, are you going to do like the New York streets? I'll see you. For table? Are we going to be able to identify and prioritize areas?
Yes, so the sewer master plan uh, will identify a CIP or capital link for at least a ten years and prioritizes the sewer replacements that need to be done first, um, and then with the next uh, ten years as well. So yeah, there is going to be a schedule outlining the priority of sewer repair needed for the next ten years.
Is that study about how many dollars?
The study, yeah.
Okay, and how much do we have today?
The study is already done. The study is already done and is already committed.
Yes.
Okay, great. I'd like to make a motion that we keep our rates the same for one more year and do one, isn't it?
I completely agree. I think if we can not raise rates, we should not raise rates.
Okay, so when it comes to five percent, when your, those said didn't tell you this.
Just don't worry, we can open the public hearings often.
Sure, it's our right, the public would like to have the race changed. Do you have a race happy out there? Okay, we'll bring it back to council. We have a motion, can we have a second? Hold both please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have the motion by Mayor Pluton Warren, eight second by Councilmember Van, who will now proceed. We'll call both, Councilmember Van. Yes, Councilmember Torres.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Pluton Warren.
Yes.
And Mayor Shalber.
Sure.
Item passes five zero.
All right. Okay. We're now at the public hearing relative to placing annual levy on assessments of installation maintenance services and public riding facilities on the median between the boundaries of the territory included in Stanton Lighting and Landscaping District number one. For this history of year two four, two five, or sooner, or less, and lighting act nineteen seventy six.
Okay, well, this is our second public hearing and it's being held to place the annual assessments for Stanton Lighting and Landscaping District number one on the property tax roll for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five. Stanton Lighting and Landscaping District number one was formed on March tenth nineteen nineteen eighty one pursuant to the provisions of the State of California Landscaping and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy two. In relation to the district's assessments for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five, the city council has ordered to take in the following actions. On February twenty seventh, the city council approved resolution number twenty twenty four dash oh four to initiate the proceedings for the district assessments for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five and order the preparation of an engineer's report to be completed. Staff contracted with Harris and Associates to complete the engineer's report and staff from both the public works and finance departments reviewed that report. On May sixteenth, the city council approved resolution number twenty twenty four dash fourteen, approving the engineer's report and also approved resolution number twenty twenty four dash fifteen declaring its intention to levy and collect assessments for Stanton Lighting and Landscaping District number one for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five and set the date and time for tonight's public hearing. The city court posted a public notice regarding tonight's public hearing at the Stanton Community Services Center, City Hall and the post office on May thirty. The district's assessments have been set up their maximum rates for the last three years. These maximum rates were established when the district was formed in nineteen eighty one and can only be modified by another valid measure. Therefore, the proposed assessments in this staff report reflect zero increase in next year's assessments compared to this year's assessments. To staff again as a request, the city council opened the public hearing for this item. After considering many comments, approved resolution number twenty twenty four dash twenty six directs the Orange County Auditor Controller to place the district assessment on the property tax roll for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five, this completes my staff report.
So that one is no reason.
Yes.
As we don't like. Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, I'll move.
We have to have a public hearing.
He told me.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the lighting and landscaping district? I do. Hey, hey, wait, hold on.
It was Mayor Van.
Hold on, carry on, push it, second, hold on.
I have made a motion by Mayor Shalber, second by Councilmember Taylor, that will now proceed. We'll call both, Councilmember Van. Yes, Councilmember Torres.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Pluton Warren, and Mayor Shalber. Thank you, sir. Item passes five zero.
Okay, I'm going. Okay, all communication, have we received anything?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we did, we received one e-public comment and that will be reported to the record, but will not be read as part of this meeting as a.
Okay, um, we normally don't read these.
Correct, sir, we don't.
Okay, I'll just give you a quick summary. Uh, there has been some concern about violation of our A B A B rule. So we just want to let you know that staff take. Yes, sir. Way up.
Thank you, sir. Just ask you to speak into the microphone and state your name. We do have three minutes.
Yes.
A little bit higher. It's a little, it's.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
A little bit higher.
Okay, hold on a minute. Okay, thank you. Thank you uh, for allowing me to attend the meeting today. I know it's a public meeting. My name is Dave Woolley and I'm Dave Woolley, the associate. I was on your consent calendar as a man's fair. I want to tell you, the council, and I'm very grateful to be able to work for this city staff. And that's, that's really all I had to say. I, I'll tell you, one of the driving factors, I do that work for public agencies almost exclusively the last thirty years. Worked in County Orange. And uh, one of the driving factors in this, me wanting to work here is your city engineer, director of public works, that's Susan Pangol, like I've only met twice, but we had a occasion to work together and City Mike is a good man, hard worker, and I want to work in the camp and that's, that was one of the reasons. So I wanted to give him a shout out. We're not related or anything. So I'll tell you that I was very grateful. We had a professional interaction and I was very grateful for that. Last thing I would say is I really appreciate, I'm not a, uh, I don't reside in Stanton, I'm invested, but I really appreciate the diligence that you're putting in on those energy contracts. You look back, they're easily manipulated. Energy is not something you can see, it's not something you can store. But certainly, certainly something that you need. You look back at Governor Davis's time, two thousand, two thousand one in Enron, and how easily they're manipulated. Really appreciate your diligence. Thank you and have a nice evening. Um, yeah, I do. I want to appreciate the fact, and I'm sure we all do, that very rarely do people that we have contacts to come down, introduce themselves, we know who you are. Now that we know who you are, it gives us a much uh, better relationship with you. So we're the ones who appreciate you taking your time to come down and introduce yourself to us. Plus, you actually point yourself for the very good.
Great, yeah. Thank you, sir, for making the point, yeah. We appreciate it.
So wear that proudly.
Wear it in, not on the stage.
And feel free to come back anytime. I, I, I appreciate it. You guys have a great evening and thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
We have no communications. We haven't initiated business break. We have a committee report, our house. Yes?
My son went over to WAGS a couple of weeks ago and was talking to WAGS and they would really like to do more with the city of Stanton. Like to participate with us in this. They would like to participate with us on an awareness campaign, whether it's spay, heater, or a car. And so if we could give more proactive, give more bags and with them, maybe even have them do a meeting so they could go through their program with us. We haven't had a presentation. It'll be done in a very long time. I think that would be great for everybody involved. That's all.
Go ahead.
So the Orange County Public Library, uh, has a branch right across the street, that's the St. Margaret Branch, that does have their summer reading challenge going on right now. And if you're all the way to Office Four, go to the library and sign up for the reading challenge and encourage kids to read and prevent burning laws over the summer. And they're doing this challenge, also organizes throughout the summer. They have lots of children's programming. Please stop by the St. Library, they have a calendar. Um, they have all sorts of performers and musicians. They even had a Spanish dancer and things like that. It's really fun, so hopefully you guys have a chance to head over to the St. Library and enjoy your reading.
Anything for future gain?
I have something. I'd like to put on the agenda a um, a discussion to possibly proceed with NDA with this NDA. Uh, and I think, you know, based on what I heard tonight, doesn't cost us anything or hold too much staff time. Sure, there's no commitment to join. That would be at least get uh, data that we need to make in one decision.
On top of that, I would like to recommend that we reach out to um, the three cities that are on board right now and find out how it's going with them, how it impacts the city staff, if there's any costs to them and how the world is going to see by the public. Then I also like to maybe contact a couple of cities that have this far and find out what maybe the short term is on that would be very close to. And then I think that information will help us bring a burden. That's okay. All right. Anything else? Who's your study session? Okay, you're up, Gary. Oh, I'm sorry, you can turn the subject.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you give item fifty D, this is a city council initiated item, discussion regarding revisitation, return of talk on the block community meetings. At the June eleventh, twenty twenty four city council meeting, Councilmember Taylor requested that this item be agendaized for discussion. Councilmember Taylor is requesting to discuss the revisitation and return of the city's talk on the block community meetings.
As I remember talk on the block, you did one district, once a year, so we did it four times a year, three. And uh, it was just a relatively simple, we lived in a community area, we signed up a community meeting. I remember doing one with Carol at Cross Point. And. Oh, it was. My house.
Please note that's made of fire department.
Okay. I had one in mind anyway. We didn't have to prepare it. I don't know what happened to it. I don't know when we stopped doing it. I had one at the. Yeah.
We didn't want the whole one.
It was more of a safety thing with the fire department, I think, wasn't it?
Whatever they want.
Was it just out?
Looking.
So that one wasn't that far along, you know, that's.
We, we did one in your neighborhood, Councilmember Taylor, I've been working with coordinator and we had the C S P go out and we had city staff, they wanted to do it specifically related to emergency preparedness, so we did do one.
And earthquake preparedness and stuff, that's what that one was about. I said, you remember that? And I don't, we haven't done one in five, five, it's five and a year.
We've been utilizing, when we get community requests, so we counted the business ones that we were doing as well. So when we get requests that are topics in certain areas, we've been counting those which are talk on the block. So, so we count with them because it does take the same staff time to initiate a community meeting, whether it's with a business or a resident. If the council would like to go back to specific ones per district, where I would recommend the council member be the focal point of identifying what the topic is. And staff can provide the support, but it would primarily be that council member addressing that topic that is of the most interest to the constituents. We would also ask that we spread those out because our calendar in terms of staff support for another event is extremely limited to when we can squeeze those in. So we would ask that we have plenty of answers.
Oh, yes, of course, we have that discussion this week. And the council member, uh, what we then ask is we uh, have a regular meeting and maybe we ask questions and things are meeting with the present, presentation also. It's uh, it's unsupervised or anything like that, but it, it does allow us to get into communities where, like I did not know that the prostitutes brought people over the main street. Or this evening, I work for coming home, can't get his car down Main Street because of all the ladies of the evening. That just scared the heck out of me. I think we really need to listen to our residents uh, on a more local district level, I guess, so that we don't get surprised and just, that seems to surprise the council. I think we have a really good opportunity to, but there's. No, and so, uh, that would be a, I should know that we will have to, uh, move aside some money.
If the council member is going to do the majority of the work, I mean, that's up to you. If you're asking staff, then yeah, we don't have resources currently allocated for this type of additional activity. But I think it would depend on the scope that the council's interested in. If it's something informal that you go to the local park or in your home and it just requires staff support, I don't think we would need that huge budget amount of something small or.
We do have staff support. Uh, the staff used to put the signs out in the neighborhood, they would be on the website.
Oh, minimal things like that we can do.
And we, uh, staff would bring drinks and sometimes snacks. There would be a staff.
So I think it needs to go with it out to, so this was. So I think if you scope it out, so this was.
And chairs and tables.
This is to bring it back for further discussion. So I think we're getting into that territory. So if we, if the council is in consensus, that would bring staff to future discussion. Then during that time, I think we can scope it out and then staff can receive that and then return with what that resources might be needed.
There's there's another way to capture all that. Number one, I encourage each council to have their own meeting. Therefore, the cost of the city would be very, very small. The other one is, if you want to really do a good job, to have a town hall. Therefore, we can take care of it, maybe quarterly or something like that, or something comes up that we need to do. So that's another option. And the other option is simply have somebody in your neighborhood invite you out and host it. There's a lot of people that need it. So there's a lot of different ways to facilitate that. It's just about what your preference is. I do the fact that our staff does have a lot to do. We do this, we use this sometimes to call the meeting so that we can take care of business while they're. Their problem is if we're having our council meetings in the neighborhood, they give a place on head right here also. So there's a lot to it. So if you come up with an idea and you want to run it by, just call head and see what you can do.
So my understanding is, for example, when we met at the neighborhood, they were so grateful that we were in their neighborhood and that we were just expecting that, you know, drop kids, drop everything and come. Here and see plus. And I think just giving them updates means that they hear of safety, you know, parking and all sorts of things. I think I think that certain neighborhoods have their. I was part of the act. About what's what's going on. They they tend to, there's all these rumors and. Yes, and then I think being accessible like that where we're in their area makes them feel great. And what I worry about is we don't want to just go to them because they need something. And I think that sometimes that that can be interpreted that way, or when we need something, we'll go and hold these meetings. We have it regular and it's active. It's published in the stand, described. This thing, this talk on the block, this thing, this thing, you know. And that way it's a regular thing and they know one calendar when they need some, when they need some other questions and all that. They even need all their health numbers and city staff or whatever. I think that's helpful to increase, have a better connection with the neighborhood so that the barriers are less.
Another thing. No, it's just what I was going to say is what I thought was so good about the talk on the block was how many residents just swarmed the police chief's side. But they did and they got to ask questions that they they couldn't ask in any other kind of a setting. And that really would feel better, you know. I think they, I think they got a lot out of it. I really do.
I can deal with topics for a day because I get four hundred emails a day. We all know it is always trying to save, protect, and find. Those are really tough things, Dave. Probably.
Well, I didn't explain it to them in this situation, but let's communicate the vote.
So you're voting to bring it back to a future council meeting?
So may maybe when you guys bring it back, we can also bring us up numbers about how much it would cost in terms of if we want to do what we did traditionally where we provided light refreshments and drinks and then table shares and. A couple of staff members to market it as well.
Well, yeah, because they had to pick up the chairs and take.
Yeah, yeah.
It is a big.
Not that we can actually get the cost to consider when we're deciding what kind of.
We can, we can put together some preliminary costs, like hourly rates of different employees. And then you would have to figure out kind of like, okay, well, we really want this. So we can try. It won't be exact, but we can try and play.
Yeah, there's one other option. Two weeks to do this. Well, that's running out. This way, we used to have a council member have open house on Saturday. And I may have coffee and chocolate with whoever it is. We could probably do it by district. It should be cool. If you meet the people in your own district. But if you can't make it, then we can have, I can fill in for you since I represent the city. But you know, it's really a one. It's only be like, what's a month? We have four. Full Saturdays a month. That's four of you.
I want to get this.
What's important?
No, I'm telling you not just one person. Otherwise, you for one, one day, but you would have the opportunity to meet with your constituents in your district. That's all I'm saying. That's just.
I like. You need to make a motion. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Mr. President, forward question. We start gathering and maybe research for exactly.
I didn't do this.
Mayor, can we move on to I V T D? Over for them.
I'm gonna go.
Just because things get lost in the wayside, we, years ago, we were looking into local preference. And we had voted in a two percent benefit for local businesses on RFQs, RFPs, so on and so forth. So maybe we could just take another quick look at it and think, you know, expensive, but we can take a look, see if the two percent is of value in this day and age, or if it should be three percent or four percent or one percent. I don't know. But if we could revisit that, maybe update our guidelines that we had in place. Because I'm not sure how long ago we was at this. It could have been six years.
We actually recently updated the purchasing contract guidelines upon my trial here. There is a clause in the guideline that allows for a local preference, but it does not state a specific point or percentage amount. And so it does provide general guidance that the city staff, when they're doing procurement, should consider individuals who are located in within the city. But it does not describe explicitly what that advantage is. And and so it then relies on quality and cost.
Okay.
You guys are going to ask H D, is there a, there, you've got RFP. Are you sure we can do this?
So I apologize. Let me, the the statement that I just made was related to request for proposal formal. If there's small dollar purchases of supplies or equipment, they do get a two percent. But it still is not. We're still considering quality, so there is still that discretion for staff. We're we're not just purchasing an item that is low or cost if it's not of the quality that the city's expectations require.
Do you think that's good enough? Or do you think that we should, I would, just have a nebulous amount there? I don't know if that's really the best thing, or we should be, okay, you know, let's take a look at the cost of the quality and all that, and then we can apply our whatever percent on that. You know, to make sure that we're not buying the cheapest just because it's the cheapest they can stand. And we're buying something quality and standard. That way the business owners will also know that because they're in Stanton, they're going to be receiving these benefits.
So I think this is something we could talk about if the council agrees to agendize this because it would depend on what the council's goals are, right? So if your goal is to make sure that you're providing a benefit to a business for being established in Stanton, regardless of anything else, right, that's one priority. If your goal is, we look at quality and cost effectiveness and that, where those two connect, regardless of where your business is located, that's another priority. So I think the council might want to have a further discussion because there could be times when you'll be avoiding something waste and related business. So how much of the delta in terms of cost are you willing to subsidize, basically, which is what that would be, right? Because you could get it at a cheaper price, same quality or better quality, but instead you're choosing to pay more. So in essence, you're using your public funds to subsidize that quote. So I think it all depends on what the council's priorities are. And so I think we can have a more fuller discussion if we agendize that item. And the council members can also have some time to think about what their priorities might be for such a local.
I I don't have a check. I don't have a check. Give me a check. Okay, you got it. Okay, moving on. I would just go to.
Thank you, Mayor.
I don't want to tell me, thank you.
We're going to get a report, Chief. I want to put you on the spot, but I know, not a big deal. We have a report that you like coming up. And usually right now, we have some kind of strategic plan of how we're going to try to do our very best in controlling illegal fireworks with OCFA. Also with RIN. We had talked about some type of a program that we never got back to us on. Where we were taking a lecture, easy to go and find people who were the property owners that were actually.
So since Captain Pierce wasn't here last year, I'll just fill in, fill in some of that. So last year, the council had discussed potentially considering a social host ordinance with extreme fines. That would be applied to homeowners regardless of if they knew whether or not their property was being utilized for those illegal fireworks activities. So at that council meeting, which was about a year ago, we did not get consensus to move forward. We talked about it. The city clerk and I have actually revisited those minutes a few months ago. We revisited that to make sure we have the correct directions. So it did not get consensus to be agendized or further researched. I did send out an email update to the council regarding that item. So yes, we have discussed social host ordinances, but the council has not given directions to report it. And I believe the concerns at that time were, one, the fines that were being considered were very extreme. They were very high and the council was concerned that that would. And I know it's also to deter, but they were concerned. And they were concerned because of the way that ordinances usually utilize in other cities. The property owner has very little recourse. So even if somebody comes onto their property, who's not even renting it, and they lit a, an illegal firework that would then caught, there would be no recourse for them other than to pay that fine. So I believe those were the two main concerns last time the council discussed that item.
We did have.
We could write an appeal process into an ordinance.
And then we also talked about, we did, I had, we had a chance to meet on what some of the other cities and agencies are doing in California, where they were actually able to identify people with drugs. They've also, as as well, saw them do it. They actually had, they got a knock on the door, they needed a citation. So I mean, there's, there's a whole new caveat embracing which we can do that. It's been a little late in the year for this, but I think that those are some of the things that we should be able to get in future progression. All right, Chief, you're up.
All right, back off the hook. Back off the hook. Excuse me. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. For the month of May, Stanton deputies responded to one thousand nine hundred thirteen calls for service. And we're not assigned to the calls for service. They observed an additional four hundred and forty-three violations of law, acting on them appropriately with either a warning citation or making an arrest. We had eighteen felony bookings, thirty misdemeanor bookings, eleven warrant bookings, and six DUI bookings. Our motor deputy issued two hundred and one traffic citations over the month of May. Enforcement, we had two rapes, eight robberies, all of which were using different types of weapons during the act. Seven violent assaults, twenty-seven burglaries, six thefts, and twelve stolen vehicles. Investigations, they've also been very busy here in the month. They currently have twelve cases that are open, have closed, thirty-five cases, and over the month, eighty-two were assigned to them. Special enforcement team had eight felony arrests, fourteen misdemeanor arrests, three hundred contacts with homeless, two receiving services, thirty-one contacts with probationers and employees, thirty-one posses contacted, one been arrested, and recovered two stolen vehicles. Senate deputies conducted numerous stops, including field interviews with possible human trafficking victims and assisted Stanford code enforcement in the railroad clearing out homeless, cameras on railroad tracks in preparation for vegetation. And this concludes my presentation for the month of May. Any questions?
You know, I, you said one thousand nine hundred and thirteen?
Yes, sir.
If you divide that by thirty days, that would be sixty-four a day.
Yes, probably.
Yeah, if you divide that, say, by twenty-four hours, if I, I did it by twelve hours, that's, that's about a call of every thirteen minutes. It's pretty busy.
Yes, sir. When you take in account everything else that we have to do during the, the work shift.
And those who are probably prioritized as one work call. Because there's some that we just aren't able to get to.
If a call for service is generated, even if the, we go to make contact, and though contact is desired after that, it's still going to, going to count. If it was something that was stale and it took us a half hour to get to because of other priority calls, that call is still going to be in queue. Deputies are still going to respond and they're going to end up clearing a possibility of them waiting. If a, if a person was seen doing a certain crime, we get to the area, patrol check for it, and they're no longer there, that's still going to count as call for service.
I think what would be helpful if you go on maybe is if when you give us that call number of one, nine, one, three, if you give me a ready to count priority one, priority two, priority three calls, and then write on count one, that would really get an idea of the priority calls versus the non-priority call. Because I know that we have them responding in a hierarchy. I think that would also give us an idea of how much time our officers have to spend on the majority of the calls versus some of the low priority calls. Why we're not able to sometimes get to the low priority call. And for our listeners, it's going to be a time to man. I, I think those numbers should be quite interesting. It may help us explain to the public sometimes, a way to take a little bit harder for the neighbors to get out. And then we can explain to them how the system works. Yeah, because they usually call and they come out right. They don't understand that. But that would be a good way to have that information available to them, which would educate them and give them a better understanding of how the system works. Chief, I know it's hard to type. Could you tell us a little bit about what OCFA is very comfortable with, to I R C? Please.
Did I get it right, though? There we go.
Yes, I think it is.
Is it on?
Yeah.
Yeah, there we go.
Good evening. Chris Fizziak, Fire Captain with Orange County Fire Authority. So as far as our plan, our fire provision folks have gone around to all the firework stands in the area and have started their inspections, making sure that they're all compliant with all the codes and all that stuff. Specifically the standing, working in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department. We put together our Orange County Fire Authority countywide plan that is, it gives specific steps of what we're going to do to address the hazards of the firework show, going out and inspecting the professional firework shows and all the stands, and then steps that we're going to take to try to mitigate and make most safe, safe conditions possible so that the, the injuries. And we do have our tracking and our reporting of any firework injuries that occur. And then they will develop an after-action report and report that out and submit that information to our resources.
Is the, is the bomb squad have their name, their issue or?
No, bomb squad will not be available specifically to, to a specific city or area. They'll be roaming. So they'll be throughout all of our contract cities and incorporated areas. And then they will be available to respond to the request that they require.
And so they'll take, they'll, they'll go to, are we going to take them to the bomb squad or the?
So our process with Orange County Fire Authority is when we come into. So our process with Orange County Fire Authority is, when we come into contact with large quantities of illegal fireworks, we surrender the area safe, eliminate it, and then we make notification to the sheriff's department and request the response of the bomb squad. Once bomb squad gets there, they, we assist in whatever they need and then help support the situation while they clear the area.
So will we be transporting to that, oh, they have...
They'll be coming to get for any large illegal fireworks fines, even if our deputies on the streets find those in our neighborhoods or at other locations in the city. They're also calling bomb squad to come collect those certain items.
Jim, you have a list of the samples, files that you always have. So let's say you go down the street, let's just say San Jose, and the whole street is lined with bomb squad, it's all to bring them. So that's an enforcement issue, but it's also a confiscation issue. So that would be when bomb squad comes in and takes whatever you confiscate. And what's our maximum fine this year?
Our maximum fine?
Yeah, we have a certain fine. A thousand? What do we have? Are you... It's going to be like your...
That's our max.
Huh?
That's our max. That was 8,000.
I just wanted to say, I caught OCFA's bot injury prevention video for fireworks on the news today.
Right.
It was really good.
It's something they do in conjunction with all our partners to just try to get out there and just show the public the dangers of illegal fireworks. They can really harm an individual and more, more for the children that are around celebrating without the proper adult supervision. So it's just one of those that we try to get that message out there, and let kids saw it, do, and interesting.
Yeah, especially the quick peeks that's blowing people's pants off, that's horrible. People don't even know it goes that fast. It has, that's, that's awful.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Okay, is there any other business before the council? Any comments from staff? Okay, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and everybody have a great, safe and secure future.